Tonight is a presentation about retail coach. So I'll turn it over to you for these questions.
Yes, sir. You know, of course, how to do retail strategy. But again, Toby and I had the good fortune of actually having a call with the retail coach and Mr. Kyle Kofler, his partner. Yeah, I think it's just something I think we need to listen to. And I'm with Toby, we should go Toby to Mark and Ray Burke. I think people was like, keep in mind, we've already talked about retail strategy. So we're not having anything that I have agreed. We've had that conversation with retail strategy. They understand our possible direction. But I just want something Kyle to actually take a look at and let us know what they have in hand. It's something that may be interesting to Toby.
Thank you. Just to add to that, you know, with the budget cycle underway now, we'd like to step back and evaluate our retail recruitment and our marketing services that we are receiving through you and say, we always want improvement on that. We have built and we're continuing to build a good relationship with ten reps. And we are always wanting to look at doing things differently, promoting things differently, looking at our market differently, new set of eyes, things of that nature. So we've talked to a couple of different groups and with folks who write retail strategies, they know that we're having these discussions and that's just the nature of the business. So without that being further ado, Kyle, I'll turn it over to you for your finished introductions and get into your presentation with the time that you have.
Perfect. I'm gonna get up here so I can work these slides. You know, Toby, thanks for the introduction. I'm Kyle Kofler with Retail Coach. I'm a project director. Kelly Kofler, my father, CEO of the Retail Coach is here as well. So we're based in Golden, Mississippi, about three hour drive. We've been doing this for, you know, right at 24 years now. And really what we do is we help community of retailers and restaurants. So, you know, it's a targeted retail recruitment approach. And we want to bring in retailers and restaurants that are going to complement what's here already, but also fill that void where, you know, individuals that live in Anderson might be traveling to offer other communities to get a specific good, a specific restaurant or those type of things. So really a full service retail recruitment firm is what we do. Like I said, we've been around for 20 plus years, worked in over 650 client communities. And then really what we strive ourselves on is that 90% repeat client rate. Typically, if we work in a community, it turns into four or five years. Some communities we've worked in for 12 to 14 years, just based on the work we've done, the way we keep our clients updated. Really, the coaching game comes in to that, working with our clients, really bringing them in with who we're talking to on a regular basis, always keeping them up to date with what is going on day to day. This is kind of what our group is. We're not a huge firm. Everybody is really hands-on. Everybody touches every single project. We've got Matthew Lowensack, he's kind of in the office. Carrie and Caroline are two of our retail recruitment specialists. I will be kind of your head point of contact with Kelly as well. But this is kind of what our client team looks like. And then kind of like I said, we're retail consultants. So we're not brokers. So we work very well with local real estate contacts. So if we help bring a deal to the table, we're not splitting commission fees or anything like that. We're 100% compensated through our contacts or through our contracts with client communities. And then we don't have a sales team. So who is here is who works this project on a daily, on a daily basis. And then kind of our phased approach, our retail 360 approach, seven phases, really the first five are what we kind of try to knock out on the front end and then get to the meat and potatoes of the retail recruitment. So I'll kind of hop in on what some of these look like. But phase one, Kelly will talk a little bit about this, but we, if we have a chance to work with y'all, you know, we want to be seeing boots on the ground approach to where, you know, we want to know this market, know the available sites as well as your best local real estate agent. Kelly, you can talk about it.
So real quickly, the way we view our, like Aniston, is we're trying to segment the market into what we call sub-markets. And just for conversational purposes, looking at Quintard, North and South, I segmented north of 431, sort of that north district. It's a unique emerging district. Obviously, you've got the stakeholders of Walmart Supercenter, then you've got the Lowe's. And in our estimation and our quick look for this presentation is that's where you're going to see a lot of interest from some of your larger national brands that are going to want to follow in the footsteps of the Lowe's and also the Walmart Supercenter. And then you get the South District, which may be from your downtown core all the way to city boundaries of the railroad tracks is what we call the South District. And then that, you could almost say that's your automotive corridor because you've got some key stakeholders with dealerships there. So when you look at each of these sub-markets differently, the South Submarket, for example, could be segmented even further down than what I've done. You know, it's south of the, you know, south of the downtown district and then north is south, north of the downtown district, you've got a cluster of retail around Quintard and 18th. So we look at all of those sub-markets uniquely because each has their own real estate potential. Because ultimately, we want to position you to be successful in the retail recruitment game. And in that, we've got to determine in each of those areas, what is the lowest hanging fruit? Where can we be successful the quickest? You know, the South District, the downtown core, or the North District?
And one way we kind of do that is by taking a in-depth look at cell phone analysis. I'm not sure if y'all are familiar with that, but we're basically able to track cell phone usage, going in and drawing specific polygons around different areas in town. So we could do this for your downtown district and run it on a 12-month period. We could run it on a three-day period. I know y'all do Fourth Fridays downtown. We could pull that data and provide that. But we ran a sample report on your Lowe's, looking at roughly the past 12 months. And the darker red up there is a higher concentration of consumers where they're based, based on their home location. So anybody who stepped into Lowe's over the past 12 months and was on their phone, had one of the top 1,000 apps in the app store up and running on their phone, that was a pain. So that pains on their home location where their phone spends its time from 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM, which really lets us know, okay, who's shopping at Lowe's that's not living in Aniston on a regular basis. So you can assume how beneficial that would be on our end for retailer and restaurant recruitment, as well as for local businesses downtown saying, okay, you know, we had this event, Fourth Friday, here's the heat map, here's where a high percentage of these consumers came from, based on their home location, here's who we need to market to, you know, next Fourth Friday and things like that. So looking at Lowe's over the past 12 months, there's an estimated number of 188.2,000 visitors and those 188.2,000 visitors are making 1.9 million a business. So on our end, we take this information and we send this to other retailers and restaurants and say, hey, you know, this is a very well-performing Lowe's store. We feel like you should take a look at surrounding sites around, you know, this Lowe's because we know that y'all have hundreds of other locations around Lowe's and other communities all over the country. So that's kind of how we look at that. And then from that, go ahead.
Yeah, it's just kind of pay that's going to really put that northern sub-markets on the map of a lot of, or on the radar maybe of a lot of national brands to see how successful they have been, even though just a couple of miles is profiled, there's one there on I-20 in Oxford. So duplication from Oxford to Aniston is incredibly key. And this type of data shows that it's truly a separate market that Lowe's has got.
And, you know, this is the type of data that we use to shore up what we call retail trade area, where you're pulling, you know, roughly 80% of your consumer from, which is going to be outside your community population, which is roughly, you know, 21,000 right now. So this is the type data that we have to have to be 1,000% positive that we're out there marketing extremely accurate retail trade area. Because if we're marketing y'all with, you know, 21,000 to retailers and restaurants, we're selling ourselves short, you know, just based on looking at your daytime population was, is roughly 33,000. So that trade area would be much larger than that community population that you have. And also we do a gap and lease analysis as well as a demand outlook. So basically what this is, it shows, you know, what makes code, what sectors are you linking the most to other communities, competing communities in your area? And then we also do a demand outlook. So, you know, what's that demand for food service and drinking places now? What's that demand estimated in 2027? What's that demand five years down the road? Which we've seen has been more beneficial for retail recruitment with brokers, corporate site selectors over the past two or three years. We've really been rolling out that retail demand outlook, which has been extremely helpful. And that also lets us know what type of retailers and restaurants we need to go out and recruit, specific ones that have, you know, that most demand growth or that highest leverage percentage.
All of this data is important because it's positioning us to be successful in selling you to the retailer, restaurant and developer community. All of this is super important. Kyle mentioned something that is really want to underscore is your daytime population that you have here, roughly 33,000 people. Then we look at eating establishments, Kyle mentioned the gap analysis. I think that is really one of the things that we would target first is eating establishments because you want that 33,000 people for lunch in a perfect world to eat within your city boundaries and not in your neighboring community. So that is really important. Separating you maybe from a competing community is that daytime population. We also looked at it for Oxford and it is not nearly what you have within the city boundaries. So once we have the trade area, and again, we want it to be as large as possible, but we want to be able to confirm it and stand behind it 110%. Then we look at what is the next thing we need to be, do to be successful? And we've got to identify properties for development and redevelopment within the community. And just for conversational purposes, we looked at the North District and an example of the South District. Obviously, because I mentioned a little bit earlier, you, you know, the lack of floor lease space that you have in the market is obvious to us as first entrance to your market. There's not a lot of floor lease space. So new development and redevelopment is going to be key for it. So this is 37 acres, you know, sort of between Lowe's and Walmart Supercenter. Incredibly well-located real estate. Has a little bit of topography issues. I don't know of the 37 acres if it's all developable, but due to the size of it, it'll be mixed-use development, something like this. And again, we're new to the market, but this is something that we would use to introduce you to the retailer community as well as developer community, something like this. And again, what happens is you start to look at other properties within that sub-market as key properties. Everyone wants to be within the shadow of a Lowe's or a Walmart Supercenter. So any site that you have, and again, in my opinion at this point, from 431 to up to Glade is, can be in transition because again, I think that from a high sub-est use standpoint, maybe there's a lot of opportunities there as well. And also in the South District, I looked at the roughly 7 acres that is just across from the Ford dealership in the south of the Chevy dealership. I did a, I did a trade area study on the Chevrolet dealership, Jeep dealership in the Havreys. And talking about super original location, that's what the 7 acres is. It's a destination location because currently these car dealerships are getting, burning down all the way to Douglasville, basically in the shadow of Atlanta, getting tracked that far. That's a lot of people, a lot of consumer traffic coming into South Quintard. So again, we use all of this data to really look at the 7.7 acres and go, you know, what is the high sub-est use for this? So again, we look at this entire corridor for opportunities like this. And I mentioned high sub-est use. We will do on the entire corridor of Quintard, what we would call the high sub-est use analysis, where we would look at sites and opportunities, not as they are today, but what they can be. You know, maybe taking existing buildings and considering that it could be a quick serve restaurant or a casual sit-down, where it may involve buying a building, tearing it down and building new. I know there's some vacancies. It looked like there's empty Walgreens or, excuse me, Wendy's in the downtown district there on Quintard. Looks like around 10th in Quintard, there's some acres for sale for lease that could be split into various pad sites. All of those things come to mind when we're looking at sites and going, what is the lowest hanging fruit? Where can we be the most successful the quickest? And that's how we're going to look at properties all the way from your city boundary all the way up to probably Glade Street. And, you know, also when we start talking about identifying retailers, we look at the successes that you've had up here in the North District. And then you look and see that they, they're duplicated, you know, as I mentioned, roughly two miles away. So what we would start thinking about doing is what are other retailers that are located here, larger retailers, that could go school on the data that we've come up with on the Lowe's and on the Walmart Supercenter? And we entice them to really take a strong look, maybe at that 37 acres or maybe another site along Quintard. So that's how we come up with our suspects, you know? We don't, we don't, it's much more scientific than just pulling a name out of the air. We have to come up with a list of retailers, restaurants that fit your market, that fit the trade area population. But again, you've got something that a lot of communities don't. You already have successes with Walmart Supercenter, the Lowe's and power of all that. That's really, really key in getting the attention of other retailers. Nobody needs to be the first of the party. You want to get two, three, four up there that are already in a sister community.
And also Taco Bell is going to be open right there. We, in the Walmart.
Yeah, I mean, obviously you know that, but you know, we stopped and talked to a couple of guys that were putting in the Taco Bell. So what we do, again, when we talk about duplication from Oxford up to that Northern District or wherever they may go in Quintard, is what we did is we looked at the trade area for Lowe's and then wanted to, then basically this is an estimation of the city boundary between Aniston and Oxford. This is, this is the Aniston Northern District Lowe's, this is the one in Oxford. And you can see where the customers for the Aniston Lowe's are coming from. They did their homework. They're reaching a market north, same one, same way that the Walmart Supercenter did. But the key takeaway from it and what we've used in our sales process is, look at this, you know, there's, they're not getting, you know, that Lowe's is not getting any much traffic from, you know, salad by tweet. So we can go to other retailers, the TJ Maxx and the others and say, look, I think there's an untapped market here. Let's show you how Lowe's looked at it. Let's show you how Walmart Supercenter looked at it and go to school on it. And you can see, and again, we look closely at the zip codes, roughly 4% of the business of this Aniston Lowe's is coming from Oxford. It's that scientific data that really separates you and puts you on the map.
And then marketing branding. So everything we put together, all the reports, the retail market profiles, GIS site platform, we spend a lot of time on site profiles, all those sites uploaded to GIS platform, everything brokers, site selectors need to see to locate your markets. A lot of times, you know, you might not know they're snooping around, but oftentimes they are, they're on your website. We want to make everything super easy for them. All the retailers and restaurants that we verify as fits to the market, we put together feasibility packages with a demand outlook for the specific categories they fall under, sites that are a fit for them. Each retailer and restaurant, they have everything's kind of down to a site, send out exactly what they need to be successful. We want to make everything as easy as possible for them. So marketing branding is a huge part of what we do, keeping everything really clean and crisp with our client communities, logos, you know, cutlers, those type of things. So that's marketing branding. And then, you know, here's, here's an example of what kind of some of our site profiles look like. So all the sites that we verify for development, redevelopment, as well as existing lease space, you know, we want to work with, you know, your local Realtor to say, hey, you know, we want to help you bring somebody in. If we can help you improve your marketing flyer, we want to do that. We want to work very closely with who's here already to kind of help with things like that. So this is, this is example of what, you know, some of our site profiles.
And we can rebrand this to your local Realtors. If they would like to have this with their logo on it and their contact information, if it's okay with you, it's certainly okay with us. I know that I looked at the brokerage firm that has the 7 acres and they did not have the information on their website yet. So we would do whatever we could to help them put this information that we come up with on their website to make their job easier in marketing that image.
So kind of recruitment and project tracking. So when we start recruitment, we want our clients to know exactly what's going on at all times. So we have what we call Airtable. So when we create a retailer match list, we put all those retailers on and y'all can log on at all times and see who we've talked to, what they said, are they reviewing the site, have they submitted an LBI? So that's kind of a way for y'all to make sure we're doing our jobs like we say we will. So we have this at all times and then we typically do bi-weekly update calls and say, hey, you know, here's who we've been talking to. Have you heard of anybody snooping around on your end? So everything's, you know, it's really a coaching, a really a team approach. So this is what that Airtable tracking spreadsheet.
Initially in real time. I mean, we don't update it once every 30, 30 days or every two weeks. It's when we're recruiting for it, we update it immediately. So anyone who looks at it should have it in real time.
Yeah, and if, if we get a super positive response for a retailer or restaurant, you know, I'm typically picking up my phone and I'm texting my primary content to say, hey, you know, here's what we just heard back, great feedback. And then we put it on here just so everything is taken care of and nothing slips through the cracks. And then also downtown revitalization and retail retention. So we want to provide the downtown small businesses with all the information that, you know, the national big guys have. So all the new data that we provide, we run that specific studies for downtowns. We also host downtown business workshops. So I told you, we'll run that cell phone analysis for Lowe's. We can go in and run those on specific businesses. It's accurate up to three feet. So we can give them data on their specific business downtown, which is also included in all of this. So that's probably one of my favorite things to do is doing that downtown business workshop, getting to talk to, you know, local business owners, getting to go into their shops, see, you know, kind of what they do good, what they might not be doing best. And, you know, giving them some tips and tricks with what we've seen be super successful all over the country.
And we try to, we try to introduce the same level of data that we give to the national brands to the Lowe's. And if they use the data and they embrace it, it's a game changer. And, you know, in 2022, you know, with COVID issues, with national, you know, brand pressures, they need to use this data in order to survive on forward. They need to have a website. They need to have some level of online platform. We make it very educational and very encouraging when we, when we work with the local businesses. And it can be in your downtown district, and you alluded to this a little bit earlier and something you said, Toby, was we don't call it local retail always, we call it local business. If there's local businesses within the city that could use this in their practice, if they be in on South Quintard or north, then absolutely we want to help everybody we can.
So also trade show representation, that's, that's a big part of what we do. So we set up meetings for our clients at trade shows and let them sit in on those meetings with us. So the individuals that we're talking to 11, 12 months out of the year, they get to see that, they get to sit in on those, they like to see, you know, what sites we're looking at, just so they can kind of be involved. That's the coaching part, where ultimately they can sit down and have those conversations themselves. We go to all the ICST shows, Retail Live shows throughout the country. And then, you know, coaching and ongoing support, you know, if we got a chance to work with y'all, we would be here updating y'all on a regular basis, whether that's via Zoom in person. So, you know, we're in Golden, Mississippi, so three, three hours away. So we're very involved in our client communities, you know, definitely want to be seeing host a number of workshops and those type of things. So that's kind of what we've got, you know, would be happy to answer some quick questions.
What are the cities now land with, who you help with, Bark Avenue?
Yeah, so we've been doing a lot of work lately with Millie Wood and the 58. So.
Charlotte County, Jackson, Center Point.
Clara.
Gunnersville, Appleville, you know.
Quite impressive. Very good. Yes, ma'am?
I'm very impressed with your research and the fact that you coach businesses accurately. You've landed them, you helped them. And I'm also very impressed with your transparency. But with that, I was wondering, we're always very, very careful about economic development. It's always hush, hush. There's a lot of things that we don't know that are going on. And I was wondering, when you said that you put this on the website, what, where you've been, you went to a business and called on and made contact with them, is there a downside to that and that maybe another municipality would be looking at that and knowing who you're contacting?
So to answer your question, the Airtable tracking spreadsheet would be password protected?
Oh, yes.
So we don't give that out. That's different than really our retail dashboard. So the dashboard is more targeted towards brokers and site selectors getting information on, you know, market data, what sites are available for development, redevelopment. So that's two totally different things. The Airtable tracking spreadsheet would be more focused, you know, password protected with really information on who we're talking to.
That is an exceptional question in line of your, you know, your competing community of Oxford, you know, one not wanting to go. I mean, again, we, you may be the best of friends from that, from one standpoint, but economic development is very competitive. And so we strive to keep that as quiet as possible. Even if we're making a council presentation, we're talking about specific issues or prospects, we would encourage something in executive session just to keep it as quiet as possible.
Okay, thank you.
How, assuming we would change our retail team, do you guys, how do we transition the projects that are already in the works, the contacts that have already been made, the relationships that are already built on a variety of sites and with variety of retailers? How do you reach in, you have relationships with, you know, other entities that are obviously your competitors, but, but you're all working in the same environment too? I know you sometimes, just like I do in my business, I have a lot of competitors, but I lean on them for advice and fact of fact too. I'm assuming you've got some way of managing a transition from one team to another that would create a seamless situation.
I would say nine out of nine, nine out of, 9.9 out of 10 relationships that Aiden Peck or whoever it may be, we're going to have a relationship with them as well, just because, you know, we've worked in 40-plus states and we're, you know, we're talking to the same people all the time as well. I mean, we've never had an issue with that whatsoever. Now, I mean, there very well could be something come up. I don't know, you know, very well could have a conversation about some of these, some of these issues, but I would assume, you know, that's sort of the thing about having a fresh look, fresh set of eyes on it is to see, I want them to see how we knew it first before, you know, before having those conversations.
I think one thing that simplifies that, and is a very good question, is that you do not have affiliation with a real estate brokerage partner. That's where those dynamics become more difficult if somebody was connected to their
That's where those dynamics become even more difficult if somebody was connected to their broker's side if they were working a deal.
Yeah, I mean.
That would have to continue on.
We we've never, we've never done that, so that that that's that's a very good point. I don't, my mind doesn't think that way because we don't get fees on projects. I could see where they could be, the the other firm could be, uh, a little problematic to problematic to give away information if they're sending them a fee. But again, as I mentioned to Toby, success for us is when we land somebody with vendors in the mountains, wherever they're located.
How do you measure your success rate based on the municipalities that you work with? Is that based on the businesses or what does that look like?
You know, success is determined by us landing new businesses in your market and promoting redevelopment in your market. I mean, again, when I started this numbers of years ago, data was not as successful as it is now. So we really transitioned over the past twenty-plus years from a, from a data recruitment firm to now where much more of a recruitment firm because that's what we provide, that's the relationships we have. Data is out there, we go and find and buy, you know. We got, we feel like it's traded for this, and again, uh, the other, we have done, uh, but this this cell phone analysis is a game changer from the standpoint of convincing retailers in your situation that if they were located in Aniston on the north side, they're capturing a whole different market. And so, you know, again, one around the world, we're judged by our success.
And and I recognize that analyzing the market is a non-alien cause. How long would it take for you to basically really wrap your office around this market to really go ahead and sell it?
Well, that's sort of where I.
What else entail that?
Yeah, where I come into play is probably coming and spending three days in the marketplace, two days, and I will, I know it pretty well, you know, because I've done it so.
Sure.
Uh, you know, how does, how does the the West emerging hopeful market compare to Green Bar and Air and and in four thirty-one? And how does that impact Quintar? You know, those are the type of things that I have yet to get my arms around. But I have a good feel for where I'm going to be successful on Quintar and with what type of retail. You know, again, one of your issues is you just don't have a lot of places. If I, if I got four or five interested retailers, they're going to go, where are you going to put? You know, some people may, some retailers only have a brand that they won't go in a really older strip center, you know, service strip center. You're, everyone needs to be in a, in a nicer, you know, strip center. And, you know, you've got a cargo freight, you've got the tractor supply centers, those are virtually one hundred percent optimal. So new development is going to be key for you in our relationship with developers as well.
Yeah, I know you referenced that seven acres on South Quintar. You, I mean, if you got anything in mind, like a type of business potential, I mean, just give a word that is, you know, location.
I, you know, all I can say right now would be someone that would fit the, fit the consumer draw that a, um, that a car dealership have. You know, taking into consideration burning down the double steel, you know, uh, it it could be, you know, it could be, uh, farm equipment. It could be, you know, anything that would play off of the automotive industry. I mean, not a, you know, you know, any used car dealership, but but again.
That's why I ask, where is the location?
Right, right. Something that, so someone that would benefit from that huge draw that these car dealerships are bringing in. It won't be entertainment, it won't be, it's, you, they still won't have to meld in. It could be something, you know, it could be, uh, a John Lear dealership or whatever, somebody that's going to benefit from it. You've got that automotive feel for that, so it's not going to be one of your mainline national retail brands that locate here. It's going to be something that's more in line with the type of users you have there today. I mean, Havert is for example. I did a cell phone study for for your store. They don't have a lot of business. I mean, they don't have a lot of customers coming in, but they come in from abroad here.
Right.
Because again, you're talking about higher, higher ticket price items, so people will drive through their business.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and I love it, still better analysis, making a case based on that.
Yeah, and we use it to make the case to get them here, but we also almost reverse engineer it like I did with the Lowe's to see. I also looked at the the Lowe's, uh, store in Oxford to see how many people are getting in from Aniston. And it's it's very much a telling tale that they're two separate markets.
Yeah, the dots on that map, that makes sense.
It's crazy, yeah. Well, thanks for the opportunity. We're, uh, I think most of you have our partners.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. We appreciate this opportunity.
We'd love to work with you if it makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item that you just put is bid, I've known this on bid for solid escalation, uh, that was A, and then the pre-bid for construction Devil's Street Park for next week. Any, any, anything else on that, question, comments, comments?
Pre-bid for senior bid for garbage. And I think at the next, especially when we have a conversation, uh, I will, I mean, for, keep in mind, you have to have something in place, kind of the, uh, intercept channel. So we got to have some, but we let you know we going to have to go up because this is going to sustain at, uh, at least five or six dollars higher than before. But also there there's a possibility of, uh, recycling as well with one container, with one thousand dollars per month probably per room. So there is an opportunity that we can do recycling as well. But we're looking at, and just starting them out there, we talk with finance that some, we're looking at probably having to go up to about twenty dollars a month for per can. So that's, that is something, just that, throwing it out there. But it did, you know, because it wasn't as hard as we're looking at what Pales said today, we really wasn't as hard as I thought we would be. But I think if we get twenty dollars per can, I think we can solve the violation when it comes to recycling. And then I think we can also adapt, adapt what Public Works does so we can, we're going to, nobody can agree.
Oh, that's nice.
It's going to be like, like, so I just want, we can talk.
No, no, we didn't.
No, nobody, no one did.
Did not get on what?
Before you hear, before you hear, so we separate that. But if we, but those are the numbers we're talking about, then we're going to have to make a decision before, but it's all on top of it. Already we're looking at, but we, we really have to look at that sort of, but I think it's just recycling, understanding one can and stuff that we talk about, the block recycling can, we can actually do a community, community doing, doing a lot of muscle. We will have a second, a second can, and say that if we can actually drop the recycling off. So the, the agreement. Yeah, it's what the agreement, that being if we could, what we're going to say is if we level this for the garbage, if we don't have to worry about garbage, with the agreement, Public Works will go to do what they need to do in the agreement. So it'd be a whole idea, but at long, we don't have to deal with the garbage as well, just in the agreement, we'll be, we'll be fine.
So who, so looking at, so the examples, like, is only a pass rate?
Yes, sir. We were talking, we, we know, I, we've talked about how many, I guess, Council has to be ready if we talk about that two million dollars, that's.
Oh, yeah, I know this.
But I, I, I know, that's, that's what I mentioned, uh, we're, you know, from, from meeting we went to, of the city, we're at twenty dollars, so we're, we're at twelve. I mean, we can't be, first, they said it, and be, and still stay behind on time, this, this, I. Especially gas and everything else, and keep in mind, how they was probably comparable, but I have to answer, and what they're twenty-one?
Twenty-one now.
Twenty-one ninety-nine, and they just run from there, so they.
How would that be something, yeah, how would that be?
I think, you know, we just, we need to do, and then, like I said, I think what we find is, and, uh, the Water Works is working with me, of course, we're net with Water Works. They're working with us and we're like, we're going to get everybody to pay in the right way, they're able to actually do what we need to do. I think all of us fall in the heaven, I think it's pretty, like, I'll give you a little push at the end, but I think if we get here, it would be what we need to get. So we're ready for council, we got that, 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 the passage, but keep in mind, we also sometimes have to go out and give the fees before y'all, but I don't know if it's something that we try. We're running along as well, so we have, you know, we also have to have separate supply for, and that's all will be included. But just keep in mind, the, the fee, that's the fee that we recommend, the passion, twenty dollars.
Okay.
And the other, uh, the bid for the downtown market, and then pushed back, it will not, it was set Tuesday, August sixteenth, but they have moved it back at Thursday. Talking to Bill with her, there, we have got some real good opportunity on prices. So we moved this thing back, this is the third time, because we've had quite a bit of interest, and we think we're going to make it well, because more contracts, so move it back a little further, so we're trying to surprise. So it's going to be competitive, so that price look like it's going to go down a little, because a lot of people are biting on it, so that's why we're moving back. But then we'll open it on this Thursday.
Okay, next item is the proposed amendment, uh, with respect to builder permits and things.
I'll let you kind of go with Jason, so I'm not so attached, I know, with the pool. So Jason. So our permit fees for the building, we haven't come up or changed since two thousand sixteen, and even in two thousand sixteen, they didn't go up much. Uh, and really, to be honest, what's very bad this was, I've got contractors coming off every day saying, oh, these are too low, and they're the ones paying the fee. So, uh, we get, we did a overall look at it, the whole section, the ordinance, permit fees, uh, bringing it up to what we propose is kind of putting some competition with some other cities our size. Granted, Oxford, Jacksonville, really, they're loading us now, but they don't look at those fees as really, you know, a revenue generating string where it's, you know, we kind of get used to that. Um, with the new code adoption, the things that require, the vendors are taking force in it, and building, inspecting inspectors, the things they're having to go out and do is spend more time at those locations, do more inspections because of the code changes and things. This just kind of fits because it's really just making up for the extra time we have to spend in process we have to go through for the, now, these inspections.
For some of the lives that works in this business, um, I will attest, uh, this is really a relatively small number, uh, in any community for the project that's being done. It's, it's not a driver as to whether or not a project gets done or not, whether it trades a little bit or not. It's not going to create a significant impact upon, uh, on the financing of any project because it just doesn't amount to that much at the end of the day. Uh, I looked at our numbers, I know it's being done in other communities, I work in about, uh, two dozen different communities. Uh, we're, we're in the middle of that, basically, uh, with these two numbers, I have a really good relationship.
Listen, and so once we move these fees, um, you want to say increase the people doing business now, please? Now, I'm not talking about on a larger scale, but on a small basis.
It's really not going to affect it that much because we deal with that on a daily basis anyways. Um, all, any, any smaller contractor, that's just the natural bees, um, and they should still have the permit fees. But again, like Counselor Jinx is saying, those, the fee prices aren't going to increase much from what they are now, so that really shouldn't be a deterrent for good work.
I'm not, so we've been talking a little bit a long time, and what I'm talking about is the only way that if we put out a bunch of new traffic, right, and, yes, contract going to get the, he won't contract to get perfect, that contract materialized, what I'm saying. I guess we may have to, uh, keep it close to our, the new, the building that we see, does it do that reason, just for somebody to be doing?
It, I mean, reality is, at these fees, if you're looking at twenty-four dollars, um, twenty-five dollars for the first thousand, less than two, seven dollars reached, uh, ten thousand dollar project is an eighty-seven dollar fee.
Oh, yeah?
I mean, we're not, we ain't damaging a project at that point in any capacity. It just, it's not a, it's not a number that even blips on someone's radar. There may be an argument, but there, there, there may be some arguments out between us and contractors, I can face that, but, but it, it shouldn't be much of one. It's different when you're on for me, but, you know, even then, those, it's all relative.
Yeah, I, I truly understand what you're saying.
All right. I'd like to move this on, you know, the citizen.
Yes, sir.
And and just real quick, when I, so, by moving forward this, we're not going to implement this until the new fiscal year starts on October first. So there'll be some time to get the new product, but that's why it's going to get them in the pocket tomorrow, so we'll have that in the press area.
Anything further then on item four B? Okay, let's move on to the proposed, uh, street renovation project.
Yeah, yes, sir, this is really just housekeeping. Uh, this vacation is, uh, on Quintar, sunny day, so this is just housekeeping and that, and you got, we just build it on top of it already, so it's just housekeeping.
Okay.
It's, it's all this way.
All right, anybody dealing with that on six? Okay, and then, uh, the construction. I look at the interpretation.
Yes, sir, you see that all of this is just a little installation, my boss on eight, they just needed to move out, we're in the grocery store, we're looking at, it's really loving this, something I would always move to them, it's, it's must be.
And we need you to voice your character, this is only a handstand.
Yeah, you know, because it's time, so.
Yeah, okay. You, you have any updates or something?
Yes, sir, I just, come to say, I know, uh, thanks for finding us, because I literally sent out to everybody an email today, I hope they have a chance to go to it and take a look at it. And the thing that the key thing I want to look at on that is that I could find it out, go pay, use the money, uh, uh, very, uh, well last year. We're going to have one, one lead, four hundred seventy, one thousand, seven hundred seventy dollars that we can use to water painting and doing roads. When I, one of the recommendations that I have to counsel, the key thing that we would like to do, we have an opportunity to actually, uh, do, like, let, uh, like, let.
Let.
Let, and I've talked with the, uh, the commissioners, and both commissioners in this area are willing to help us with that, doing, doing let. So we're talking about the letting, and when I look at just the, uh, conservative estimate that we got today, it's not saying what is about six hundred thousand to do to seven hundred thousand to that. And even the commission is not giving me a number, but they can help with that. So we can get letting done and still have maybe closer to even two other roads and within your areas. What I would like to do is give to council, just like we did last year, a breakdown from the consultants on roads within your area. And if you can decide what road you want us to concentrate on, we can already, we can start working on getting some numbers together and then bring back for council and say, how are we going to use those funds? But the key thing is, I, I do want, if council was good, if I could, uh, remain, we know what she makes, we can move forward later so we can actually get the, get those estimates, get with the county and start moving forward. Especially with veteran, I don't see, that's, that's a true trade, that's a huge right off of that weekend, so I just need to assess on council. If we can move forward that, and then I can actually give it to the commissioners and actually give them some numbers so we can have some numbers.
Yeah, I mean, I would be absolutely for, like, and I miss the, I just, this makes it fair, fair, really, I don't, I don't care for it. That just makes sense to me.
Just did the letting all the way.
Absolutely.
And that's what I doubled for when we first started talking about doing letting, we didn't move it out for the, uh, rent, so it's actually doubled, so before you add this, I would get it done a little better. And I think that still probably leaves us a little portion of the year, still the new papers, so that will do some accounts. But keep in mind, what we try to do, working with the accounting, is have some type estimate, what we have available to pay within the entire community. So as you go over, when we get my market, why my place is not paid, we have an answer because this is what we had, these are the most needed roads and this is what we need. So I don't need that no much, so I won't stop and put it in there, but I will actually put it on the motion next, next, that the next council need for us to move forward with, uh, trying to pay letting, that's all we have to.
Yes, sir.
That's all.
All right, standing there.